If I comply to the open meetings law notification and adopt the agenda, if you don't stand with me. I pledge the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you. And hopefully everyone signed in that was interested in speaking tonight. Everybody turn your mics on, please. So then we'll move on to three staff and student recognitions. And the Whitno High School Student Council moderators from the candidate forum. Come on up. Andrew? Andrew, do you want to come up too? Oh, you're involved, come on.
Hide back there, come on.
So for those of you that aren't aware, we had a candidate forum that was moderated by three of our student council representatives from the high school. There's all three. And Mr. Bum and Mrs. Passif were involved as well with the planning and the preparation and running it. And you all did a phenomenal job. So thank you for your time and the dedication of that. And do you want to share anything about the experience, or?
I guess I would just, I wanted to say thank you to all of the people who are running because just at the student level, I know it's very nerve wracking to put yourself out there and run for a position. And I can't imagine how nerve wracking it would be to, as an adult, run for a board member position. So it must be difficult and I appreciate everyone.
I also feel like it was like a good experience to be in such a like formal event, which obviously will be part of in the future. So that was good.
Just, oh, sorry. As a social studies and civics teacher, I think we oftentimes think a lot about presidential campaigns and like the big ticket elections. And the kids get really into those. And they don't realize the impact that local elections have. And I think to get kids involved in that process more than just learning about presidential candidates was really, really cool to see. So I echo what you said and I'd love to do it more.
Great. Well, thank you all for doing that. I know it took extra time that you didn't have to spend, so thank you. I really appreciate it. And now it's time for the report.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Olivia Hawk, which some of you probably already know. I'm the president of student council.
I'm Anaya Beer and I'm secretary of student council.
Alright, so the most recent thing that's coming up is our blood drive on March 13th. It's going to be from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. One of the recent things that we did, new things that we did was we had our student council members actually go face to face in the Falcon Times. And it was to encourage people to donate blood. And rather than just, you know, sending them over the announcements and sending an email, because a lot of kids don't check their email. And announcements can be, you know, not, not really, yeah. Like classrooms can be loud, so, oh, great. So we thought a good way to like start advertising a lot more would be to actually go into the kids' Falcon Times and kind of force them to listen. That's a strong word, but you know, it's the best way we can. And then we handed out pamphlets to let them know how to sign up. So the URL was in there for signing up for the blood drive. And then on Wednesday, which is when it will be, we're all going to come in early to set up like we do every year. And we're going to be signing, signing up to work the blood drive during the day. We have to pick a movie, which is going to be the theme. And then there's going to be snacks for kids during the blood drive who donate blood.
So next week is our Whitno Gives Back Week, which is obviously the week before spring break. And when we went around to Falcon Times to talk about the blood drive, we also made students aware of this coming up. So the main thing that we are doing during this week is holding a snack drive for our school's resource closet. And the fundraiser is based on like a point system. So each day, we're going to have like a specific snack that would be considered like double points. And if we reach our goal of points, which we are going to set, then we are going to hold a student teacher dodgeball game at the end of the week. And then also I believe that the hair donation is part of that week as well. So I know that at least a couple of our students are planning to donate hair. We've been working with the VC Salon on Highway 100 to coordinate that.
Yeah, so going along with all of that, the hair donation is one of our many committees that we have set up. And last meeting, general student council meeting that we had, we had our members create physical posters because we really want to amp up that advertisement. So one of our committees was the hair donation. And that is in partnership with children with hair loss. So we're really cracking down on that. And we've got a great committee for the hair donation. And then another committee is the Gives Back Week, which we just talked about. And the snacks of the day for each day of the week will be known to everyone through the posters that we're making and through announcements and emails in any way we can reach out to the students. Another one is also the pep rally, so we have a committee for that. Someone to run the pep rally sometime during the week. It might be in the middle, like Wednesday, or it might be at the end on Friday with like the dodgeball tournament. And that's just all during Gives Back Week. So it's a big week for us, a lot going on.
So normally as part of Gives Back Week, we have Mr. Falcon, which is where boys from the school compete in like a beauty pageant. And they win based off of monetary donations from the audience. And like the money that is collected goes to like a charity of their choice. But we had to push this back due to the lack of boys signed up. So we're planning on having this sometime in late April due to the fact that one of the prizes of winning Mr. Falcon is winning two free prom tickets. So we have to have it sometime before May.
And just to wrap it up, our goals are really being more focused on advertisement because I personally think that one of the big problems with, you know, just like high school students in general, is that they're just here to go to school and they don't really, unless you're in student council, you don't really, you know, notice all of the other stuff going on. And you don't notice it unless it's right in front of your face, I guess, and you're forced to listen. So that's one of our main goals. So like making posters going into Falcon Times, we're really hoping that that will result in more participation from the students. And then another thing is the senior gift idea is coming up. So I personally am a senior, so I was planning on, you know, in my classes, getting feedback or information, ideas, whatever, on what the students want the senior gift to be. And then that is focused in student council. So basically, I want to get all the ideas that we can, maybe send out a survey, get the ideas, narrow down the ideas, send out that survey, whatever it might be to really narrow down what our senior class wants. And then we, as a student council, will report that back. And the next thing that's coming up is our next year's officers. So we're really trying to figure out which student council members are going to be running for office and like letting them know what that all entails. And that's pretty much it.
Can people access this information through the website or the connect or anything like that? How can parents or community members, whatever, see what's going on?
Oh, yeah, so we hopefully will have another newsletter coming out. So what student council's doing, what DECA's doing, all the clubs. So that'll hopefully give people information about what's coming up.
And in addition, I feel like when events are like quickly approaching, there's usually like announcements sent out through emails to the students. And I believe those are found on the website as well.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Great work. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening. Okay, we'll move on to five discussion and future action items. A is K-12 music programming. While they're doing that, we had a couple of people register to speak. So I'll read the disclosure with that. Public comment will be accepted after the conclusion of each discussion item. Comments are limited to current agenda items. Anyone having legitimate interest in an agenda item may participate. Attendees must register their intention to speak upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes unless accepted by the board president. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Comments are to be directed to the board. No person may address or question board members individually. The board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on the issues, but not on specific personnel, as personnel is handled through other avenues. So what we'll do is we'll have the presentation like we normally do. The audience members will have the opportunity to comment or give your three minute time allotment. And then there won't be discussion at that point. We'll just move on to the next item. Okay? Okay, so go ahead.
I just want to, if board members access the presentation from the drive, there's one additional slide at the end which just summarizes everything. So if you wanted to grab it, again, otherwise it'll be up there, so. I can go to the next slide. So wanted to share a little bit in terms of some background. I think, I know some of you attended that and have looked at the presentation that we made available on our website. So one of the things that I'm going to start out with in terms of the background is that we had a retirement for, starting next year. At the end of this year, one of our music teachers put in their intent to retire. Some conversation about it in December and received that in January. And so at that point, sat back, and as we do in any department, to try to look at or any area in terms of looking at staffing, what are our needs? How do we post that? What does that look like? And so sitting back and looking at that, knowing for a while that there has been some, in terms of FTE, so full-time equivalency, in terms of teaching load, if you will, in some of those areas, a little bit unequal, unbalanced, what would be considered full-time in terms of a full-time teacher that we use to determine equivalency in that. So we sat back and sort of said, you know, what does that look like and how is that? And we also noticed then, as part of that, that in addition to six 12 teachers, there was some inequity, but also among the teachers themselves, there was some inequity. So the first part is really sort of this staffing, which was precipitated really through our retirement in order for us to step back and sort of look at all of that. So we noticed that our staffing was, was off from where we needed to be. So we weren't necessarily just going to immediately repost exactly as we had. We needed to sort of sit back and look at that. And as, as we have started to do, looked at some other data. We looked at programming data. We stopped and looked at course enrollments. We looked at what was that in terms of the equity? We discovered some things in that that hadn't been looked at. It was new for me, I think for our principals, some of it was also new. In terms of looking at the programming between our two elementary schools, students weren't giving quite the exact same experience in terms of number of lessons, rotation, what students were getting pulled out of, those types of things. And so said, okay, well, we have, now we have a little bit of inequity in terms of how that's happening between our two elementary schools. And that's a concern to us as we're making sure that students have a very similar experience. And they were getting pulled out of different subject areas at each of the elementary schools in terms of that. So for students who are in fourth and fifth grade, that was a two-year sequence of getting pulled out of other, in the most part elective areas, if you will, but still getting pulled out of those things. We also had what are called tiered entry points. So our orchestra starts at fourth grade, band is starting at fifth grade, and then choir starts at sixth grade. So those were just some observations as we were looking at student programming, both within music programming and options, also between our elementary schools and some of the other pieces that were there. Simultaneously, we've been looking at the middle school schedule. And this is the second year in probably a pretty significant middle school restructure. And one of the things that we had planned for in our middle school schedule during the connect time, if you remember when we shared that, was to be able to provide some enrichment opportunities for students, not just intervention. And we're at that point now, as this is Bob's first year, where we're looking at a schedule next year and making some enrichment opportunities. How can we do that? What might the middle school schedule look like to expand some of the opportunities for students? So while we, in, in this analysis, realized that we have some instructor staffing across the board with our six teachers, actually seven right now, also noticed some inequity with our students and the experiences that they're receiving and how it's being delivered and what that looks like. Also looked at some opportunity with middle school and what that looked like, not seeing really any significant changes with our elementary schedules per se. Sort of saying, how do we, how do we look at that opportunity to try to balance some of the challenges that we've run across in? So those are sort of where this all came from, and gathering some data in terms of all of those pieces. So we held a parent information meeting. So we met, we, we met for a while, we've talked with staff. Ideas were tossed out, were thrown out in terms of all of that. And we looked at, we brought forward two options. We held a parent informational meeting on Thursday, February 28th. I know a few of you had attended. And so in, in order to sort of look at those things that we were trying to address, two solutions were brought forward at that time. One would be to continue with the current programming and then redistribute teachers to cover that, whatever that looks like. Piecemeal, the teacher FTE, to make sure that people were at full-time equivalency and that everything was covered. So option one is to not fill the position retirement and make sure that, that folks are at full-time equivalency in that. Option two would be to delay the start of the instrumental program until the summer before sixth grade, look at the middle school schedule, have sixth grade be a starting point because we know that we can have more contact time with students in sixth grade. And looked at pros and cons with that. And at that time, two was more attractive to us, partly because there's less traveling of teachers. Anytime teachers are traveling between buildings, we know that the complications of having schedules aligned because our schools don't all start at the same time. And, and trying to fit that in there is already challenging for our teachers that do travel. I would say five of the seven currently travel to at least two buildings. So we already know that we have traveling that are included for some of our staff. Adding more buildings to do that would be challenging. And trying to take care of the opportunity that we had at sixth grade to cover the number of minutes that might be lost at fifth grade in looking at these two options. So that evening, we had heard, you know, some comments that of, of wanting to stick with elementary programming and understand that. This was not a matter of saying that we don't believe that it has some value. It was looking at the challenges that lie out, lie out in front of us and how do we address those? And so came back, and I guess what I would share at this point, Kathy, you can go to the next one. In reflecting over that night, one of the things I would say is that we were really putting a microscope on the music program. We were getting into the number of minutes and lessons and times and travel. And we were really putting this microscope on the music program. And I, and I paused a minute to say that we need sort of step back a little bit and maybe use a telescope to be able to say, we can't look at music in isolation from everything else. Because to say comments like, we should just add more music offerings to make people full-time. You can't just add more music offerings without having an impact on something else in terms of the schedule or what courses students offer. So it's not quite as simple as that. So we, I can't, we can't just continue to look at music as an isolated entity. Students have to register, have to, there has to be interest in whatever we do. We also know that there are, you know, the people who play Jenga, that the schedules that our principals have to put together, it's, it's very complicated with all the factors, especially shared staff. So sitting back and saying, not looking at the music program in isolation is something that we probably need to do in all of this instead of just trying to fix some of the logistics that we encountered or at least uncovered, I would say at this point. In addition to that, it's always a balancing act. And I don't have to tell school board members that, is there, there are challenges that you have between what the budget can handle and the offerings. Because if you looked at everything that we wanted to offer to students, there are always trade-offs, right? And, and we have to look at what that, what those balances are in terms of that. We also have to look at staffing and schedule because sometimes, and I think some of you, when we were bringing forward new course proposals from the high school, those were the questions that you asked, and rightly so. If we add this, what will that do to the other offerings? Or can students do this and that? And those are always those trade-offs. Because we can build something, but if it can't be set up in a schedule that they're allowed to take because everything else is sort of hinging upon it, that's also a challenge. We also want to balance, you know, student needs and wants. Because honestly, if math wasn't a requirement, there may not be as many kids taking math today, right? So there are some things in terms that we have to provide for students that are, that are required in, as far as instruction, and then things that, that students want. And then our core and elective subjects. So sitting back and looking at it, reflecting after that and saying, what can we offer? How do we balance all of this together? We can't just look at music in isolation because to solve that, we have to look a little bit broader. There were some comments that this, this conversation was coming out of a cutting staff or a budgetary need. And I just want to be very clear that it is not a budgetary issue. It never was a budgetary issue. It is not trying to cut teachers or teaching staff. And wanted to just share with you a little bit from that. Over the last few years, and I can only speak to those, we have reduced 1.4 teachers. And that was, if you remember, in Family Consumer Science, based on course requests, we were down to only one section of students being asked and within a social studies area. So wanted to be very clear that any reductions based on course requests that we've had. We have added, and these are added FTE to the overall teaching staff, two social workers, and I think the board, we came forward with one and the board said two. So those were two positions that were added. Those were not cut. We added two, and those count as teacher contracts in terms of that. We've also added a literacy coach, two math coaches, a makers lab or coding teacher at our middle school. And in October, a fourth grade reduction. So if the budget was driving all of that, we would have not been adding positions. We're looking at student need and where the district needs are around achievement and learning and options for students. This last year, we also added time in physical education and art. We had more demand for art at the high school, so we added more FTE time with art. We could have said, no, pick a different subject. We also, in terms of replacing teachers who either left, retired, or were reorganized, the teachers that we have added, we did not, we did not hire teachers directly out of college. We hired experienced teachers and with that. So I just wanted to be clear that this is not coming from a budgetary standpoint in terms of trying to cut dollars related to staffing. When I talk about staffing, it's talking about workload and equity across all teachers and what that looks like based on course request and what, what a workday looks like for a teacher. And we've looked at that specific piece of it. Kathy, go to the next slide. So here, so stepping back with the telescope view, and you may wonder, why is this finding itself in here? But if you remember back in December of 2017, we came forward with Career Pathways. And we decided that we can't be everything, and we're going to focus on three areas in terms of K-12. We're going to provide some experiences based on job market and that, and our courses. And so when we came forward that, if you look at the three areas of curriculum, facilities, and staffing, we have made decisions and resources aligned with that Career Pathways document. We put a program together, we said, this is where we're going, where we are going to align our resources and do our program toward that. So if you look at the staffing, facilities, everything that we've done, we've stuck to that plan in terms of what we are trying to build in terms of career pathways. So based on that, Kathy, go to the next slide. I shared at our parent informational meeting, we put all of our courses that we offer for general music off to the left and our ensemble performance groups to the right. But what we haven't done is put together a pathway of what that looks like K-12. What is the goal of our music program K-12? Is it for kids to get exposure? Is it to have a high-quality performing, you know, ensemble groups? What is the overall group? And I think that's where we sort of said, we haven't really put that out there. Because if, if it is one, if it is to have as many experiences and exposure for students to music, we would really boost our general music offerings. We might have beginning guitar, we might have beginning keyboard. We would look at those options that more kids could get exposure and experience with music. We also know that there are trade-offs when you say, we want a competitive, high-performing ensemble, and that's where kids, those are where the trade-offs are, right? We haven't yet done that. And I'm not here tonight to even present what that looks like. What I'm telling you is that work needs to be done around what is the goal of our K-12 music program here at Whitno. And I want to say that again, here at Whitno, not in a neighboring district or a different state or what it used to be or what it is. We have to figure that out here as a district collectively with stakeholder input about what we want our music to be, program to look like. We have not done that yet. So one of the challenges right now is sitting back and saying, it's working for us. And I would question, it's, what does it mean by it's working? Because we haven't yet said what it is that we want it to be. And so that is right now sort of our biggest challenge in this. And time has to be spent saying what that means. Is it exposure? Is it awards in this? Do we want to have a marching band or a concert band? Because there are trade-offs in all of those things. You can't, and, and different programs have different things. So to just pick certain elements of certain things is really hard right now without knowing what it is that we're trying to create. So tonight, we're going to share three other options to consider. As we've been, you know, as we sat back and said, we can share other options. And there are trade-offs with these options as well. So we continued numbering them. So option three is, we could move the elementary music program to before or after the school day. That's an option, we could do that. And it was that way in history. Whitno has had before and after-school programming for its elementary not that long ago. I'll let others share about what that looked like. That's an option. We know that that may make it less accessible by some students who might have other commitments before and after-school or transportation to be able to do it. But that is an option. That is an option. It, it does check off a few of those boxes of what we're trying to solve. Option four is that we would say that, maybe not this next year, but knowing that we have one more year out, we could take a two-year transition to starting the instrumental program at sixth grade, saying, we're going to use this next year to really build up that middle school schedule to see how that might work. And sort of have a doubling up this year to be able to see what that looks like. But then by nineteen, or excuse me, 2021, it would, it would be starting at sixth grade. So it's sort of, it's like option two, but it's got a one-year buffer before we do that. And option five would be saying, starting with fifth grade, but we need to develop a program and need to annually decide if that is working for us. And so that means setting up some criteria about what does working mean, right? All of the factors that we think is important. Is it growing the program or giving students the experiences that they want? Is it meeting people's needs in terms of that? Are they getting pulled out of classes? All of that stuff. Are the schedules working? What does it look like? I can't tell you what that is because we haven't set up what the program goals are. But option five would be, is, is different than four by saying, it's done in two years. It's saying, we annually have to look at that. And, and we may say it is or isn't working. Elementary music may be, it is or isn't working once we know what those program goals are. In terms of what all of those look like. Kathy, go to the next slide. We put up some of the criteria and each of the, just, and again, it's hard to put exactly if it meets that criteria because part of it has to do with how, how it ends up from the staffing piece of it. So we gave you program options depending upon how we staff it. It may or may not reduce traveling time for teachers. I can't tell you because we haven't done all of that until a decision is made. So, but these are some of the factors that we would want to look at right now. None of these talk about the program. These only talk about the things that sit out there in front of that. So next steps in terms of what we're doing is, we are still finalizing, although I think we're out of finalizing from our high school, course enrollments. We took, we spent a couple hours this morning looking at course enrollments from the high school. So we know what kids have signed up for next year. But remember, our middle and high school schedules are always based on what kids sign up to do. So we can say, we're going to have six sections of this. And if only two sections of students sign up, we can't finalize anybody's schedule. That's just the nature of how it is. It's a little bit more predictable with core areas because, especially English, where they have to take four years of it. So we are waiting for middle school elective numbers to see where students fell in there. So we have to finalize that. We also are looking at building schedules and teaching schedules, which is a We also are looking at building schedules and teaching schedules, which is a puzzle in and of itself, and the principals will sort of talk a little bit about what that looks like. Um, next, Monday, the board will make a decision about where we're, we're going, in terms of what this looks like, and from there then, communicate what that looks like to parents and students. And I would say regardless, really, of any of the pathways, a, a program plan has to be made. We need to do that for a couple of our other programs too, but, um, we were in a, in a situation with the retirement that sort of had us step back and say, how do we do this? So, the staffing comes after, once we set up that program plan, to be able to staff it, and what course enrollments look like. So those are the things that are, um, sort of next, after, after tonight. So here are the five options that are out there. We'll keep that up there for, for talking points, if you will. What I will say, and again, we don't get into personnel issues publicly, but, options one and two are presented initially, because it does not, um, with the retirement, it allows us to maintain, um, the remaining six music teachers, all at full time. That's why options one and two are originally presented. Options three, four, or five, most likely will look at some hiring of a general music teacher, to some equivalency, I don't know what that is. And most likely will recall, will, um, require some or partial reductions in other teaching staff, in order to meet what options three, four, or five are. I'm going to let the principals talk a little bit about, uh, some of the pros and cons, or their, their thoughts on some of those, and Lynn, feel free to jump in on any of those
All right.
We'll go oldest first. School, school-wise, school-wise. No, so, I mean.
You could have said ladies first.
Would you like to go first? Um, at least from my lens, in thinking of just the options and some of the things up there, my ideal is just to have, I just use, use people that have my staff as much as possible at my school. That just allows us to create as many flexible options for kids, not just within music, but in other areas as well, too. Once we start sharing a little bit, that just gets a little bit tricky navigating. One nice thing, if it's with the high school, it's, you know, it's like walking from one end of our building to the other end of our building. So there's a little bit more possibilities there. But the second, at least in my experiences, outside, outside of here as well, once we start sharing two, three buildings, and in this case, potentially maybe four at some spot, it just creates, that limits my flexibility to try to do things for our kids. Try to create flexibility within our school day, within grade levels, and, and coming up with new options, things like that.
Can I, can I jump on that one real quick?
Yep.
Uh, from a, from a staffing standpoint, um, from a smaller school that Edgerton is, uh, we often were in a spot where, um, for lack of a better word, kind of trying to cobble together staff, to be able to fill, uh, the positions from other places. What happens there is, it makes it really difficult to create a cohesive schedule, and we build our schedules now, where, uh, classroom teachers get a prep period, when the kids go to a specialist, art, music, fayed, tech, library. Uh, right now, we have a schedule at both elementary schools, where, uh, we have common planning time for each grade level, which means, that all of the fourth graders are going at the same time to one of these specials, all of the fifth grade is going at the same time, and so on, all the way throughout the day. If you're looking at trying to bring staff in from other places, one of the challenges that Dr. Olson is mentioning about the puzzle pieces, is, um, then that begins to drive your schedule, rather than, um, uh, creating common experiences for students, and creating common planning for, for teachers. So, um, we went several years ago to a block schedule, and I would really hate to lose that particular option.
And I guess I would add, just, um, we do currently already share staff with the high school, um, for another specialty area, um, and that is a challenge in and of itself, when you were talking about two very different schedules. The very earliest schedule of the day, and then the, the latest. So, um, it took flexibility, and, and Charlie was willing to work with, with me, to be able to maintain what Chris was describing, that common planning time for the grade level teachers. But, the more you add into the mix, um, you, we've had times in our scheduling that, um, some grades end up with that common planning, and, and others don't. So, um, then now you're talking about another level of inequity. So, it, we've, we really have, uh, we need that time, that time is really needed, for the teachers, um, as we move initiatives forward, as we want them to share plans, um, as they're, they're learning from each other, and, um, as we bring, brought in coaching, um, into the district, and allowed common times for that to occur, I mean, there's just so many positives to, to having that planning period. So I, I would echo, um, that having, having that, um, situation where we're having fewer staff members shared, is, is, is the best idea, at least currently, how we're able to function best. I think also, as we look at, you know, um, experiences, and we heard from parents, um, you know, very passionately the other night, that, you know, they really believe in, um, early exposure and early experiences. We, uh, we, we really went back to the, to the table to kind of look at some other options, um, once that input was given. And, and, um, and I really think that, um, having an opportunity to, um, to start a little bit younger, um, will, other than middle school, could add some concerns that we are, we would have to work out at the elementary level, but, um, that's an option that, that I think that both Chris and I could be up to, a challenge we could be up to figuring out. So, that, I just wanted to put that on the table.
What are those, what are those concerns?
Um, how are they, how are we going to have those children, what classes are, what are they going to miss? Because it's, it's a give and take. So right now, in both of our buildings, they miss different content, um, not, um, in both places, not academic, um, content, um, per se, um, but, they will miss something. It's a trade off. You're going to miss something to get something.
We've heard, where they pull them out of library, and then they made up time to get them a book, or to get them, how's that work?
Well, not to get into the, the, you know, the devil of the detail in that, of that scheduling, but, um, they actually just would, if they're missing something, like a library session, that's just a matter of finding a time to go back in. But if they're missing a portion of art, or a portion of music, um, general music, or, um, fayed, um, library tech, now that becomes challenging.
They miss what they're on.
Some classes, like art, is an hour. So if you miss a half an hour, you're talking about some of it's gone. But the others are thirty minutes. So, it's pretty much a trade off then.
Thank you. When you, when you're looking at, um, all of the different instruments in the group, and the groupings that you would have to teach in, because, um, not all the students play the same instrument, they're not all instructed the same way. I'm not a musician, I'd, I'm probably one of the few people that didn't take an instrument that, uh, of this crew, but, um, uh, you know that, you know that it's intentional, how the groups are made. So you can't always pull from the same area. It's, in, in Edgerton, it's, it's a three-section, um, at every level. So they're going to have to, if they're not coming out of the core academic areas, they're going to have to come out of the specialist areas, and if they're coming out of the specialist areas, they're going to miss, in a half an hour lesson, either a music, or a half of an art, or a tech, or a library tech time, or what did I miss? Fayed. And, and that's what currently happens at Edgerton. In, in art, it might mean, uh, extending that project a little bit longer, and taking a little longer to finish it. Uh, you really can't replace missing, um, a music lesson, or a fayed, that's just kind of gone. Uh, if it's library, they can check out a book later, but there's other things we do in library, just besides checking out a book. So there are skills that they learn as well. Uh, we do a lot of our typing, and a lot of our, uh, computer time is in that technology portion, and we, and we really want to expand in that area, because that is one of our core goals of our district. So, uh, we really do have to think that, that piece through.
One of the things, at least in talking with our staff at the middle school too, I do, which would drive Mike nuts, I do what I call Bob math, which means I round a lot, and just try to figure out proximities, but like, I think we maintain about forty-eight percent of our kids in our music classes, if you take the total number of sixth graders through eighth grade. And I think, in talking to the, the teachers, and again, it ends up in my past work, I think an opportunity to increase lessons within our building, will increase engagement, empower kids to want to maintain that potentially. I think we'd have a real good option at, at increasing that, because I know a lot of the ideas is to increase the numbers at the high school as well, too. I, I don't know if that's possible without having my staff selfishly be at my building to create some of those flexibilities, some lessons, and some opportunities there. I will admit, we're probably about a year away, schedule-wise, from truly being able to go like, full scale with that, but in working with the teachers currently, we're able to build in some pieces of that for next year, to kind of give us like, a trial as we go. And again, once we start sharing out, I think that gets just more difficult, because they have less flexibility in our building. We truly do, one of the things that I was excited about, and still am, is we have multiple pathways for our kids here. Um, we're creating those, whether, and I keep forgetting them, but on the graphic, there's the health sciences, the engineering, and music, and those pathways as well there. Again, right now, probably our biggest electives is in our coding, tech ed classes. Those, those are my teachers who are max to the max. But at the same time, they have access to the kids all the time in our building, and kids can sit there, and we're able to move their schedule around. I think we've got the opportunity and the desire with our, our music staff to continue to do that, but we just have, I, I'm speaking specifically for middle school, we have to figure out a way to have an opportunity to engage them beyond just like, the lessons that take, take place in the class. We're able to do that a little bit right now, with some flexibility, because we're so close, but that's having people, they can band, for example, within two buildings, and, and being able to share some of those pieces, so.
Any more before we open up?
My, my, my biggest concern is the sustainability of the teachers that we have, if we're, if we're spreading them thin. And, I think we've got, at least in my, ours building, some really good educators, who are very good, but, to have to spread yourself between multiple, you do what you have to do, I know that, I mean, we would all do the same thing, it's just a concern, that I would have that, potentially, the sustainability of our programs with the people that we have. I don't know what their capacity is to maintain that over a long time, and I've just seen that, again, in other spots. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but there's just a concern that resonates in my head, when I look at stretching the teachers thinner and thinner, um, across multiple spots.
I would add to that, that, you know, our specialist teachers are the ones that see the kids over time. So, um, they are very connected to them, starting in, you know, those younger grade, at least at the elementary level, starting at a younger grade, and, um, moving through and like, get to, get that opportunity to watch them grow over time, and so, while the teacher changes from year to year, having, you know, a, a similar face that's watching that child grow, and, and we're talking very much in our district about that whole SEL piece, and just knowing kids, right? Knowing them real well. And, um, so in the sharing model, we would lose a lot of that flexibility of, um, of having the opportunity for kids to be known over time. Watch them develop as artists and musicians, and also healthy, healthy bodies.
I would agree.
So is adding staff the answer?
Um, can you, can you clarify what that means, when adding?
Well, he, he, uh, Bob said, uh, uh, his concern was wearing the teachers thin. So, I guess I would say then if we need, if they're wearing them down, I would say we need to add somebody.
Hold on, hold on, but you're saying, spreading them between three and four buildings?
Yeah, I mean, if, if I, if I had to spread my band teacher between high school and middle school, and possibly one, if not two, of the other schools, that would, that was my intent in that comment. So, if, adding, I, I don't think that's the answer. I mean, I don't know, I'd have to think about that. I don't have, I don't have a response for you right now on that one.
Okay.
So, one, we kind of heard how, at the elementary schools, how it kind of works through the specials classes, and how they're kind of grouped according to grade. Can you touch on the middle school, what that looks like, and if students do band, like, what are they choosing between, if they're doing instrumental music versus not? Like, what are their opportunities? Can you touch on that?
Yeah, so, um, our students have, I mean, if they're, they have, they have choir, orchestra, band, um, sixth grade, we have the opportunity for like, a beginning band, and then there's kids who maybe have had some experience. Um, we also offer, uh, some computer design classes, tech ed, um, in our, in our coding, and maker space labs. So those are our, as well as art. Trying to think off the top of my head, some of our other electives. Looking at, looking at building the health sciences piece as well, uh, for, for next year. In addition to that, too, we also do look at things like, being able to support them through, like, Dr. Olson said, beginning through connect for interventions, or extensions in some of those. So, there does get to the spot where you have some of those other options, or you have some choices that you have to make, as a kid or as a parent, when you're looking at that.
And these are all classes that run on that A-B schedule?
Correct.
So, theoretically, out of all the options, students have their choice of any of the two?
Yes. Yes. All kids take English, you know, math, and currently, at, at the middle school, all of them take a, a world language as well, too. And then they have about one and a half choices.
Um, you had mentioned about the history of the program, about mentioning the whole before and after school, and someone might know, and all that stuff. Can someone expound upon that?
Yeah, um, there's been some iterations historically of, because we kept bumping into the conundrum of, pull out to pull out, or not to pull out, and where to pull out, and where not to pull out, and we're pulling out from here, and then it's okay, but then it's not okay. So, um, it was several years ago, and I, and Lori would have to speak as to whether this ever happened at HCE, but at Edgerton, I was actually the one doing the lessons at the time, and we were really struggling with the pull-out piece. So we did go through a couple of years where we just said, we're offering an option for before school, or after school, and we're not going to pull out. So then we just had parents pick whether they would prefer before school, after school, or had to tap out at that point, because they just couldn't handle the before or after school.
There was a little, a period of time when we had a elementary band teacher, and then did not, and, um, and so then in Edgerton, it was, um, Lynn, and then another teacher, orchestra teacher. And, uh, so they were trying to find time within their schedule, to be able to come over to service, uh, students at Edgerton. And it was, it was tough on the schedule, but, but that, that piece that Lynn did put out there was, for parents to, um, come before school, that was a very popular option, no doubt about it. But, the, the challenge there is the equity, is the equity.
Yeah, that, I think that's always going to be a challenge with anything outside of what the regular curriculum is, but I was, had a question to that, because that more or less speaks to number three. How do you staff to something like that? When you, I assume we're talking, this is part of someone's curriculum, it's part of their staff, but at the same time, are they not required to be in the same hours as everybody else? Is it like, extra? How does that work?
Yeah, so, without getting too detailed into the schedule, that becomes one of the challenges, in terms of, and I think Lori mentioned, that our, our middle school and our high school have close to the same daily schedule, um, and our elementaries do not. We're almost, we're, we're fifty minutes apart from that. And so, it gets really challenging when you're trying to do that, because you could create someone's day who starts, like a high school teacher, and ends it like an elementary teacher, and have a block of time in the middle, that's like, two hours that are open, right? Because of you're trying to fill their day with how, how that looks. So, or you could look at, someone does before school, and they end early on, so you'd have to stagger their day, but you can't have a nine-hour workday, but it would create in the middle of it, because if you're no longer pulling out, all the time that we're pulling out becomes vacant in the schedule, and you're pushing it at the ends of it. So that the time schedule for a teacher would look like, seven AM to four PM, but they might have from eleven to one, totally unscheduled.
When you were doing the, um, when you were, when you went to Edgerton, the before school and after school option, so the before school was more popular, and the after school wasn't, or something, is that what I understand, Chris?
It was pretty evenly split. The parents who exercised that option did, like, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they did express some gratitude about reducing the pull-out pressure.
So, how were the, uh, how were the numbers, participation numbers, when you were doing that, versus when you had it, uh, in the day, during the day?
Uh, about equal.
Yeah, I only remember a couple of people saying, there were a couple of people said, we, we absolutely can't. So, we went as far as to say, if you wanted to do it, you know, like, recess, lunchtime, you know, and that, that was wildly popular.
So you lost some and you gained some, maybe?
We lost a couple.
Yeah, I would say, two or three.
But you didn't really pick any up?
No, no, no.
Well, I mean, there, there's also probably been some discussion, I know there's been some discussion among some folks about, um, uh, the equity, uh, between students, not just between schools, but, uh, between students, and some kids are pulled out of this, and other kids aren't. For me, you know, we're talking about personalized learning in this district. That just, I'm not so concerned about that because that plays into personalized learning. And if, what I'm looking at is if, if parents are wanting their child to be exposed to instrumental music at that age. That's a personalized learning choice for those parents and those children. That's how I'm approaching it right now.
Agreed, as long as it doesn't create struggles. And we were encountering some students that were struggling with just balancing and that's what, that was the impetus for that. So totally to your point, yes, as long as the struggle is not put on the child.
Sure, but that kind of goes with, with anything that's going on. If a child's having more trouble with math and not, and, and sailing through reading like crazy, then, you know, whether it's, in a sense, something you call, you know, you know, an individualized plan or what, but, but I mean, you make adjustments for an individual child regardless of where they're having issues, right? So that may be an adjustment that needs made, but, but, you know, at least the opportunity's there. And if it's not working out for an, an individual child, that doesn't mean you pull it from everybody.
I think we learned through the process that, I'm speaking for you Lori, so correct me. That, I don't know that we knew there was the, some of the inequity that there was. I think there's a few things that we could do that would be relatively less challenging to fix from an, from a lesson, the number of lesson standpoint. Kind of what to pull out of a little bit is, is the difference between a three section, four section school and the more sections you have, the more options you have, so. But it would definitely be something that now that we know, and Dr. Olson said this last week too, or a week, two weeks ago, we, we have to take that into account.
I think number five option, the fifth option up there decreases the number of students that we're talking about with, with the pull out. If we eliminated fourth grade and started both orchestra and band at fifth, then we're talking a little bit differently that, you know, there's, there's a whole set of students that we're not dealing with in the sense of pulling out. We're just talking about fifth grade.
And over a two-year period.
And over the two-year.
And I've often wondered why they don't start things like trumpet in fourth grade, why they only start strings in fourth grade.
I can't speak to that.
I was kind of wondering why it didn't go the other direction.
The developmental, physical developmental piece.
They make smaller sized violins and orchestral strings.
Got a pocket trumpet at home that's that big.
Oh, okay.
Something I'd like to ask you, John, did you, oh, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Is it specific to John or is it?
It was specific to something he said, but if everybody else needs to go first, that's fine. Go ahead. Go.
Well, I was just gonna say that I was really pleased to hear Dr. Olson say that we need to figure out what we want to be known for at Whitnall. Because I often hear us being compared to, as she said, another district and, one district in particular. And, and if that's what we want to do, then we need to go down that path. But how, if we don't know yet what we want to be known for at Whitnall, how do we make this decision? Because we're not gonna know that for a while, right?
And that's why I think looking at option five, it sort of says that we will review it. It's saying to not continue with the fourth grade piece of it because fourth grade just continues that bubble and starting at fifth grade. And in a year from now, look at some programmatic data, spend some time with, with stakeholders developing what that is and see if it's meeting our needs. And, and so that option five says we will come back and review that without a doubt. And, and I know that some of you know that when we hired two years ago a new high school band director, one of the things that we talked about was putting marching band back in the curriculum. I want to be very clear about that, there are pros and cons to that. As much as all of us sitting around this table were a band student at one point and we either loved or didn't love marching band, that may not be what our children love or don't love right now. We have had some students drop out of high school band because we've put it back in there. And I want to be clear that we, we are very careful when we put the goals of whatever it is out there, that students have a voice in it too. In terms of, we can't just build something and say they will come or they won't come. Because we haven't really asked what it is that maybe they want, even at the high school level. My understanding is some of the general music offerings that are offered right now and the digital music were created by a, a music teacher who's no longer here. They could be great and they could be phenomenal, but the question is at what point were students asked what it is at that point that makes sense? Or where were the program goals and outcomes considered in that? So should have we offered a chamber orchestra instead of another digital music? I don't know the answer to this, these are just a lot of questions that I have and we have to figure out. So to your point Nancy, having a program review has to happen regardless of what we do here. But we are faced with a staffing, we're sitting in the middle, I think option five says that we can continue building some things and looking at it simultaneously, come back and review what that looks like to see what it's doing. But we do, you know, there's the reality of some of those pieces. So, so I agree that it makes it more challenging without a doubt. There's not a clear cut answer. There are trade offs in every single option that are up there. I just, all I can tell you is that status quo, and none of those say status quo. I hope you're not reading number one as status quo. It's not hiring a person in number one, the programming is the same, but it's distributing staff differently to cover that. Status quo is not an option. That's the only thing that you should take away. And if somebody has a six, seven, eight, there probably are more than that, but there are trade offs in every option that we've considered in all of those.
What, what is the demand in, in the fourth and fifth grade?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but at Hills Corners, we have in band right now, high forties, mid forties, something like that.
In fourth grade?
No, that's fifth grade band. I have that number in my head better than, than I have the orchestra number in my head. I'm probably gonna get this wrong, so I hate to even quote it, to be honest with you. But I know that it's, our fifth grade is about fifty, at least fifty percent of the kids are taking an instrument, one or the other. That number could be a little higher or a little lower. Sorry, I don't have it in my head.
I don't either, I, I would say it's been, it's been building over the last couple of years. I mean, I don't think it's as strong at Edgerton as it is at Hills Corners. We do have less students. But I would say that there's a good number of students, not half, but a good number of students that are in band.
So there's a fair amount of interest?
There's interest, yes, definitely.
And all fourth graders take recorder, so there is that wonderful opportunity that every child gets to have. And we as parents love those recorders.
Well, and I would say that Mike Zens came over last year and, I'm gonna mess up the names.
Eric.
Eric, yes, Eric. Ash came over and, and they worked with our, I think at that time it was our third graders, possibly our fourth graders, showing them all of the instruments. And high school kids came over and played all of the instruments and they had an opportunity to go and see how they're all played and so forth. So there, there was, it was promoted, other than the promotion that I think we naturally have with the people in those roles right now. There's interest.
So, this one's tough. And forgive me Lisa for taking a trip down memory lane. But I started in fourth grade with a violin. I did. And I worked all the way through high school and did a couple of semesters in orchestra and college. One of the benefits of doing that though, was playing as a group. My concern with pulling kids out of other areas for less than time in fourth and fifth grade is that the cohesiveness of a rehearsal gets lost. And this isn't gonna be probably the most popular opinion out there, but music is still a team sport. We don't have any other team sport that practices as a group during our instructional day. Music is the only one that has that potential right now. So finding the space and the time.
Can you talk into the microphone?
The microphone doesn't amplify.
They don't amplify. But the, the not being able to work as a group in a rehearsal and having quality rehearsal time. That, that concerns me a little bit. So what, what does the end result in June or May look like in fourth grade? You've had your year of lessons, we're in fifth grade, what, what does the end product at the end of the year look like?
So that's where the difference, the question is about like ensemble opportunities. What do the ensemble opportunities look like? So that's where our difference kind of falls with Edgerton and Hills Corners, I think. Is that on our four, maybe not, on our four day cycle, during the lunch period, our fifth graders come together either one day as a band or another day as, as the orchestra. And I think you do that on your fifth day.
On the fifth day, on a fi, fifth day of a five day cycle.
But the fourth grade, we do not bring together in either location as an ensemble group. Our fifth grade also performs at the end of the year.
Correct, same.
Ours, ours along, you know, like general music with that, in that concert format.
We run a separate program.
And they do a separate program.
So in any of these scenarios, would, would the instructional time increase?
If we went to a five day rotation, if Hills Corners went to the five day rotation, then perhaps that, that ensemble time, I mean, not to get in the weeds here, but that would be during the time. I'm not sure, I'm not really sure, I have to look at the schedule to be honest with you. Because ours is coming out of lunch and recess right now.
You know, and that, that goes back, that goes back to the aim of the program. If, if it's, again, if we're just talking about exposure of learning to play the instruments and the mechanics of it, then lessons only at the elementary school or some variation of that, then okay. If it's to give them the experience of having that team approach and being able to work on a section or, or together as a larger group on a consistent basis and have those rehearsals. Then if more time needs to be spent in there to enrich that piece of it as well, then we may now have to come up with option six. I, you know, I don't know, but I, I struggle with not knowing what.
If, if the ultimate goal is, is, and that's getting back to that bigger picture that Nancy was talking about too. If the ultimate goal is for them to perform at mid-year or end of year, they have to have an opportunity to play together. Closer to when that's going to happen, they would have to be together more frequently. And, and that either gets built into a schedule, in some cases in previous years, that was done outside of the schedule before or after school. And that was the responsibility then of somebody to get the children to school early or late or stay late. So to your point, yes, and if that is the goal, that's what you have to do.
And we have, I mean, Hills Corners has never had lessons, I don't recall, before or after school, but the ensemble group time was before school. Has, had, not this current year, but has been in some years past.
So then what would the model look like if we didn't start any instrumental instruction until middle school? Because you still have the whole large group portion for rehearsal piece, that music doesn't really go away. So what, what might that look like for middle school?
Well typically when you start moving the instrumental, there's, I would say there's, there's a good chunk of school districts in the state that do have gone to, because of the struggles of elementary school, have gone to the sixth grade start model. And what, what happens there is that you've got the dedicated class time built into the schedule. Challenge becomes, you can't just take, you know, forty sixth graders and say, here you go kids, everybody gets your own instrument and I'll start playing the instrument. Then you have to think about what's your pre-build and what's gonna be your, your summer programming to really get those kids or, you know, kind of targeting them at the end of fifth grade. How are you gonna get them to a spot where they can at least function in that group setting? But then to your point, in starting in sixth grade, there is significantly more instruction because you've got the class time, two point five times per week, plus a thirty minute lesson when we build that lesson schedule in there. So there's significantly more time by default, even if you don't consider a lesson schedule. We total, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but right now there was like a one thousand some minutes of lesson instruction at the elementary level versus four thousand some minutes at the middle school level without the lesson component yet built into it. So there'll be more, just because it's part of the class structure when they get to sixth grade.
Yeah, probably increase our timeline as far as like trying to get to like a beginning and the performance side of things. So kids could come in as a beginner, but you would have some kids who are doing things outside, so maybe they're ready for something else. That would probably just push that up a little bit quicker than we would need, than we're ready right now, but we can make that happen.
Performance has been kind of all over the board and lots of different options have existed. Performing in, with, I remember an opportunity to perform up with sixth grade as I recall or some, with the middle school. Our fifth might have done that in the past. Around the holidays, they're, they're put into small groups and, and then large groups as they play holiday music in the hallways and things like that, so.
Anybody else have, go ahead Kevin. Yeah, I just wanted to touch back to what John said as far as the personalized learning aspect in which you're alluding to. If that's how you're seeing it and it's, that's personalization, why is music the only thing we're doing? I, I think we're doing other personalized learning at the elementary schools. Well, we're pulling students out of one program to focus on their instrument program. And that's great if that's what they want to do. If you've got a child that wants to do something else other than instrument, they don't get that opportunity. So what I'm saying about the personalized learning thing is that just goes, I'm applying that towards the argument of, it's not fair that some kids get pulled out to go do this and, and, and others have to stay there and do that. Well, if their parents wanted them to do some instrumental music, then they had that opportunity as well. So I could just, you can just see it as, it's, it's available, but it's not something that those parents or the, the child decided to opt for. So, but for these other kids, it is an opportunity. So that's how I see it as, as going into a, a part of a, fitting into part of a personalized learning model. I think if we stick with, even though we're not supposed to say status quo, because that's what we're doing, then we need to build out the other inequities that come with that. And that's, well, maybe my student wants to specialize in art and they want additional fifteen or twenty minutes or thirty minutes of art instruction. Or specific sport instruction or something like that. Or my student starts chorus in sixth grade, they want to sing in fourth grade, why don't I get to sing more in fourth grade? We're still down that avenue. I'd rather see us expand a program in the fifth grade where it becomes a larger introduction into instruments or singing or something like that, that it then builds into a sixth grade program. Where just the general music time, not taking outside of something else, is a little bit more specialized, but brings that opportunity to everyone, not just someone who wants to be taken out of the class. So I would say keep in mind, I didn't put this on the agenda or bring it up to the board, just like I didn't for art or anything else. So what's on the agenda is music and that's why I was addressing music as it fits into, instrumental music as it fits into personalized learning. I didn't bring up these other things because these other things weren't on the agenda. And the administration didn't bring them to us.
Kevin, were you considering adding choir to the list for option five? If you took, if, if we modified the program and that everything started for instrumental at fifth? And if we built that up, would that include starting a choir then too at fifth grade?
I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be an option if you don't want to play an instrument. I don't see how we could go in either of these directions that we're going without thinking about what you're doing with the choir aspect. I think it's been lost with, well, that starts at sixth grade, that's always, always been, just leave it at that. Well, no, it's in the same realm, your voice is your own instrument, so we have to factor that in. I wonder if, if maybe, speculating, that maybe they haven't started voice in the elementary school because people already know how to make, how to make sounds with their voice by, you know, practically from birth. Even though it may not be as well organized as, as we've gone through life. But to be able to make a coherent sound on a violin or a trumpet or, or something takes a bit more training. I would say your vocal range and everything Jake suggests, as much training as any instrument does, you can ask any musician, any singer. Oh, I'm not disagreeing. You just, you did. No, I'm saying I think there's a bit more natural ability, starting at whatever age, earlier than you can start playing a trumpet. I mean, Lynn mentioned already the physical ability to, to play a trumpet at a younger age versus play a violin at a younger age. Okay, anybody else have any?
I do have two questions. One is to Lisa, you said that if, if we went with options three through five, there would be reduction? Can you explain that please?
Um, yeah, I, I can't get into the weeds about who and whatever, but I can explain logistically on how that would work, right? So I think to option three, it would sort of answer Kevin's question as far as, um, either people would have really long workdays and have chunks of the day in the middle that would be open in order to accommodate that. So that one might not be an entire reduction. But it would cause some really unique type of teacher workdays if you would, which makes it challenging to do staff meetings and some of those other things because their day is very uniquely scheduled. Sure, so either four or five. Where we talked about four or five and, and the options that we're looking at, both four and five talk about starting lessons at fifth grade rather than fourth grade. So right out of the, right out of the gate, I can tell you if there's not fourth grade, there's some reduction in what that looks like if there's not fourth grade, right? I mean, that's the probably, everybody can probably wrap their head around if there's no fourth grade obviously, and if somebody's doing fourth. no fourth grade, obviously, and if somebody's doing fourth grade, that becomes a reduction. The reality is, is that I've shared with you that not all of our current staff have what is considered a full-time teaching load, as, as are standards across the board for six, twelve teachers. And so when you look at what that is, if there's no classes at that level to fill in their schedule, and we're not using them to cover positions that become open, then some of them will become, if, if there aren't course requests for each of those positions at the high school or middle school to fill in their schedule more than it is now, there's a reduction there. So I can't give you who or what or where, but if, if this gets covered somewhere else, where option one was taking current programming and taking people who are less than that and moving them to fill that in piecemeal, and I think people talk to the logistics part of that. So we're still, we're still back at that piece. Five and six are looking at a, a hiring of someone whose specialty is at general music elementary, because we can talk about licensure and the reality is, is that someone might have six, twelve math licensure and they can teach sixth graders math, or they can teach, teach AP calculus BC. They hold the same piece of paper, but we're all going to agree that it's a very different level of math. And, and you can work at yourself to build that skill set up, and you might have a passion for one or the other, but the reality is, is that you could teach any of that, right? So the same case would be here too, and people that, you know, choir or, or instruments, band, orchestra, or general music, or the level at which you teach that is also sort of either a personal preference or where you've built a skill set or where your background or experience is. Doesn't mean that it couldn't switch to it, and you either decide that that's something that I'm willing to grow into, or it's not, and that's not what I signed up for, and that, that's the decision that comes with some of that. So we can move and shift people around because we might have that ability based on licensure, but it's still going to be, and so options five and six, maybe three, but def, or excuse me, um, four and five, actually look at hiring to fill the, the position that's being vacated through a retirement, and specifically looking for elementary general music as a priority of, of a position.
My last question. So it's not so much the travel between the schools as it is aligning the teacher's schedules with your schedules, and everybody's on different schedules from high school to middle school to elementary.
And there is time loss just traveling.
Yep.
And getting set up, um, that isn't with students and doing the work, yes. But it's, it's primarily.
Yeah, I would say at a minimum travel, every travel is about, you'd have to say at least fifteen minutes, you got to get out of your place, get in your car, or run over, I don't know.
And be ready for the class when they're there.
That might be longer. The, the, but the idea there is that, uh, then you got to get to your new building, got to get to your room, got to set up. So it's a minimum of fifteen, probably longer than that. And so that is an impact, it does impact if you have multiple travels. Now, you know, you're talking three travels, four travels, you're, that's an hour of your day.
So we wouldn't be leaving a class to go to another class, we would be finish the class and maybe have some downtime and then go into another facility, is that how it works?
Correct.
Yes, we build in a buffer.
Does that legitimately count towards FTE?
Travel?
We count, right, so in terms of travel time, we count that toward teachers who aren't, um, in terms of extra stuff, we, we count that toward their, their, their actual workday, correct.
And not to mention the prep that goes into prepping different age students, different levels, whatever you're doing, right?
Right, and having the materials ready when they walk in the door.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess, if there was information that you didn't hear, and I know that there are people who want to comment on whatever else, because we do, it's, we don't have two weeks between our board meetings this time, we only have one week, so we're sort of in a, um, and, and just for the courtesy of the teachers, knowing what next year looks like, I think is important, whether we're hiring, whether we're having people shift their roles or whatever that looks like, um, you know, we need to move forward with whatever that planning is, so.
All right, so just a couple of things. You know, there's been this, this discussion of strength of program, right, strength of our music program, right? My son just graduated. He was in band, he was in marching band. There were maybe fifteen to twenty-five kids in marching band at the high school, it's all four grade levels together, right? So if we had such a strong music program, we wouldn't be losing that many students as we got through middle and high school, right? I mean, ideally, their experience would drive them to want to be part of it, they'd stay with it, not, yeah, I don't really like this, I'm going to drop out. So the thought of, oh, it's so strong, it's so vibrant, it wasn't, it isn't. Last year, Mr. Zens came on and really spent a lot of time building in. We had the conversations about bringing marching band back in, right? Some people, we had meetings like this then, no, you can't do marching band, yes, you should, back and forth, right? It's never going to be a clean cut, yes, this is good, no, you know, some growing pains, we adjust as we go. But I'll tell you, at the end of last year, my son who graduated said, I really wish I had three more years in this environment with Mr. Zens, right? This year, with, with Ms. Cider at the middle school, she's a highly accomplished teacher who left the district and moved here to be part of what we're building here, right? She's the president of the Wisconsin Music Educators Association, right? This isn't just someone that just graduated three months ago that we're bringing in to do it. She has the experience, she has the passion and the willingness to move from a place she's been fifteen, sixteen years to come to Whitnall, because she sees that we can build something, right? Still an ensemble last week, last weekend, uh, middle school jazz band got a one, the only jazz band to get a one. And we're talking about middle school students, right? It's phenomenal, the excitement and the energy that these kids have, jazz band is thriving. And we're building more across the board where eighth graders work with the high school, whether it's for marching band, parade band, the jazz bands, the holiday bands, whatever it is, right? We're building that cohesion, and through the co-teaching, teachers are, students are getting used to Mr. Zens being over at one building, Ms. Cider going back and forth, right? So we're building it. So this thought of we're hollowing out the program, we're not, we're reinvesting resources, we're hiring accomplished teachers to lead that and to drive that. And then to expect them to, instead of focus on those students that are going to continue, maybe on to college, uh, playing music, um, we're going to pull from them and say, no, we can't have that many opportunities there, we need to pull and push someplace else, right? So, um, I, I think we have to trust that there is a vision. It may not be a smooth sailing every step of the way, and we do need it, but that's what the meeting two weeks ago was meant to do, was to have a conversation of, this is what we're looking at, what does the community want, right? We heard a lot of, we've got to keep music, we've got to keep music. Great, I think now we've set the sto, uh, the future of this, let's talk about what that means. What do we want out of it? Do we want to be Greendale, do we want to be somebody else, right? There, there are trade-offs that come with being Greendale. And it just didn't happen overnight. It took a lot of building through the years, so, um, I just hope that going forward, you know, community members will engage in the conversation with us, not necessarily be this adversarial, you're cut, we're not, we want to know what's going on, we want the involvement, we want to see people here, we want you part of the conversation. And we hope you'll stay with that, because we are doing some wonderful things, we're changing the band around, and, um, I don't want to see that go backwards, especially if we risk losing staff members who are already making great strides for our students. I don't want to risk that. So, that's my, uh, mission. So, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, if, if we're talking, if it comes down to, okay, how are we going to keep this at the elementary school level? Again, like I was saying before, I don't see how we can include the conversation about bringing choir, chorus into that as well, because we're talking about, oh, we should make it fair and not take away. I think the only reason we don't see as many advocates here is because there was nothing changing with that program. But if we're thinking about redeveloping something at the elementary school, if it goes in that direction or whatever gets decided, we cannot leave that aspect out. I, I don't see how that makes any sense not to do something with that.
All right, so we have five people listed that they want to.
Thank you guys.
Comment. Thank you all. Uh, the first is Joseph. Yeah, come on up, please. And then if you can just state your name and address, please.
The same Shimaleski, count in my three minutes, because that's not fair. There's a green behind me. I'm Joseph, Joseph Shimaleski, fifty-two, fifty-six, South one hundred and fourth street. In terms of my affiliation, I have two children that attend HCE, one in the fourth grade, involved in the instrument program, and one in the third grade hoping to join the instrument program. So, uh, my bias is on the table. I left the meeting last week, like firmly against option two. And I'm really happy that there's been the emergence of more thinking and more ideas, and I'm still against number two. And I'm really against number four as well. I know that the status quo is not an option, uh, I heard that loud and clear, but I would advocate for remaining as close to the status quo as possible, um, until the goal can really be determined, because I think any change you make right now is going to influence whether you can meet that goal. So if you do set a goal that says, we're going to be the number one or number two program in the area, you have lost two years to achieving that goal because you've given away the, the formative years of your program. If, if we do take on an approach to look at a goal, um, I urge that it's kind of a pyramid, right? I think that you focus on the, the elementary aspect, the middle school aspect, and the high school, and you should focus on them both separately, because there can be micro goals that all add up to the, to the big goal at the top. And so maybe there isn't a performance per se in, in the elementary school, but it's more like small group learning and those kind of things, and, and then in the middle school is where you, you kick into performance, but you've laid the foundation by practicing in small groups and getting better at your instrument. So I, I advocate for that, that kind of, that kind of approach, and I don't think the goals have to be the same for the high school and for the middle school and for the elementary, but I think they can build together. The, the only other point I would make is to consider the music, the, the children, to consider the pipeline, it, it's not a tunnel. You don't put in five and five come out at the end. It's a funnel, and unfortunately, the number gets smaller. And so I would advocate again for putting as many children into the funnel as possible, hoping that we can get the same number out, that we can turn it into a tunnel, but being realistic and understanding the choices that are going to come to these children as they progress through the district. The tunnel's the goal, but let's be honest, it's going to be a funnel. We should push as many kids through that funnel as possible.
Fifteen seconds.
Yeah, I don't think I need them. I can say Shimaleski again, that was told.
Thank you, thank you, thanks very much.
Uh, Marnie?
Can you hear me now?
Uh, it's not a micro, it's not amplifying your voice.
It's recording it, so we can't hear you any differently if it's in front of you or
not.
Okay, my name is Marnie Schmidt, uh, fifty-five, forty-five, South one hundred and tenth street. I'll make this as short and sweet as I possibly can. In a nutshell, um, my family, and I ask that you please, um, retain or expand the music program. Again, I too have heard loud and clear that, um, that, you know, we don't want to keep the status quo, but, um, I, I think as, um, there was a point that was brought up that I liked, that, you know, maybe we should take a look at what we have and figure out where we are as a district, how we want to, uh, present our music program, how we want it to grow, um, before making any decisions. You know, maybe we put this off a year. You know, maybe we think about this instead of trying to rush to some sort of decision. But if you have to make some sort of decision, um, as a member of the community with a, um, my oldest was in band when HCE still had a band, and he was, he played trumpet in the fourth and fifth grade. He was also in the sixth grade band for his first semester. My daughter is currently in third grade, and she is actually looking forward to being part of the orchestra in fourth grade. If that part is removed from the elementary school for the sake of equity or for the sake of rearranging, um, it would be very disappointing to her if it were cut. You know, as far as you have these options, maybe there is an option six, maybe there's an option seven, eight, nine, or so on. I mean, why not just redistribute the teachers so they don't have to travel as much? Why not maybe redistribute the school day, where in the middle school they have a connect time for, uh, teachers to reach the students? Why not establish a connect time, that way, you know, for band and orchestra or even choir? Why not have that time, maybe use that time as a time where, you know, band and orchestra can practice? I mean, there's, there's different ways that it can be done. As you might know, a knowledge and understanding of music has been shown to help students improve in other core subjects, such as math and science. According to one article, and another board member had alluded to, um, some of these things. Some of the benefits of music education improve, include improved language abilities, increased emotional resilience, increased empathy, increased attention spans, and increased self-confidence. These are all qualities that I would think that use ball, as board members, as well as educators, would want to see in our Whitnall students. And in, in.
This time.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks very much. Chelsea?
Hi, I'm Chelsea Kuski-Mitterman, address is one zero three zero three, West Grange. I am a parent of a second grader at HCE. I'm also a nineteen ninety-eight graduate of Whitnall, and I was heavily involved in the music program during my time here. One of the biggest concerns that I have is when we start to dig into some of these inequalities between the two elementary schools, like you've started to shine a light on, that there's going to be more than just the music program. Maybe it's fundraising, maybe it's the parking situation, maybe it's the student population, but at what point do we just say, these two schools are different because these two schools are different? And my, my question is then, is there a noticeable difference at the sixth grade level at this point in the music program? And are we noticing that there's differences in the students' abilities or their skill levels, um, at the sixth grade level, based on their inequality of programming in the two different elementary schools? Also, student time is valuable, as well as the teacher time. If we add the increased lesson time to the sixth grade level, what are they giving up in, in exchange? Right now, you know, we know that the kids at the younger levels are giving up their, their specials times. I guess personally, I would rather have my younger student give up some of those areas than, uh, missing something at a higher level, because in the end, the school day is only so long, and so we know that they're going to have to be giving up something. So I guess my point here is just that I hope that one of these options, again, I'm also kind of against number two or number four. I appreciate the expansion as, and offering these, these different ideas to us tonight, because it was pretty emotional for me to think about my kids not having the opportunity to, um, experience instrumental music at the elementary level. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sue? Is that Sue?
Yeah. Okay, first, I would like to ask a question to the people in the audience. How many of you are here because of the music program in the elementary schools? And how many of you want that program to end in the elementary schools? Okay. Is this the first time as the board? Oh, I'm sorry, I gave my address. One oh seven zero zero, West Charles Avenue. I don't have any children in school, but I have grandchildren in school. Is this the first time you guys have discussed this as a group, as a school board?
We can't answer any questions, just continue with your statement, please.
That's, that's not right. You said this was a workshop, so why can't there be an engagement between the school board and the people of the community? I mean, we're, one, because I don't have children in school anymore, but I'm a taxpayer, I should be able to ask questions and get my questions answered. Two, so when it comes to the equity that you were talking about, not so much at this meeting, but the parent meeting, you were saying that the Edgerton teacher is retiring, but you have a music teacher, a general music teacher at Hills Corners Elementary, correct? And then you have band orchestra, and she travels between the two? But you were saying she doesn't spend as much time at Edgerton as she does at Hills Corners Elementary. So can't it be that the general music stays between Hills Corners and So can't it be that the general music stays between Hills Corners and Edgerton, and you bring in another teacher for the general? And then the band orchestra, she can do like Monday, Wednesdays at Hills Corners Elementary, Tuesday, Thursdays at Edgerton, and then maybe Fridays? She can go to the middle school and help out with lessons there? I mean, I don't, what you're taking away from the kids, and when Kevin was speaking, first of all, I believe in elementary, and because you won't answer my question, I believe in elementary school, they start singing or music in probably K-4 or kindergarten, and they take that all the way through fifth grade. So when you're talking about music and stuff, and why doesn't a band and orchestra play the same role as art or as general music? Why does it just get to be that it gets squeezed in among other subjects? And if you're going to squeeze it in, can't you think of it as a regular subject that these kids are interested in? And that they should be able to, I mean, come on, how many of you guys have been involved in band and orchestra? Some of you probably still are, but you want to take it away from the little kids, why? They need that, that helps them develop, that helps them grow, that helps them become the person that they are going to be. And you're, you're just going to limit all of that, and I don't understand that. I just don't understand. And if it comes down to because the faculty or whatever, figure it out. You know, these are, you're talking about kids, you're not talking about budgets, you're not talking about, you're talking about children. And we as the people of the community are very concerned that you're going to take it away from these kids, and these kids don't have a voice. I don't, you know what, there's four people in my row that aren't going to speak, so I can speak for them.
We have a three minute limit.
Whatever.
Thank you.
So I'm done?
Yeah, that's the time, thank you.
You guys are wonderful. Mr. Jones, I would like to thank you.
Okay, and Jody?
My name is Jody Drop, 5714 South 114th Street. I have three kids at Hills Corners Elementary School. One is in fourth, currently in the string program, a second grader and a kindergartner. The elementary, starting at a younger age, is very beneficial for the kids in the arts. Bringing something like a choir, you know, it's one of those where there's, having extra groups, it's intrinsic for these kids at an early age. One of the reasons my husband and I moved into Hills Corners was because of the K-4 program. Being inside the school, we think that that's very beneficial. Also, one was because there's still elementary music at the elementary schools, because a lot of the districts don't have that anymore. A lot of the districts don't even have orchestra anymore. And we feel that it's very important to have those options for our students at this time. You know, it's one of those where you've got 140-plus kids in these programs. That's why some of these people are getting so passionate in just that elementary school moving on. I totally agree that middle and high school needs work. I think putting lessons in there really kind of building, and having other ensembles, I think it's important, because you need to get that niche if it's jazz band or if it's a specific woodwind ensemble or whatever. But I think it's one of those where cutting that building program, it's one of those where it's frustrating to me because it is working, and you have so many kids involved in it, and it's affecting a lot of families. And I speak from experience, I went to Hills Corners Elementary, I started in fourth grade, I've made my career out of it. I went on to Northwestern, the Saxum Performance Degree, and I also have K-12 in instrumental music and general music. So it's one of those where speaking from the experience of it's super important for these young kids at an early age. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, and with that said, it's upcoming before us again next week, and we can discuss it from there and potentially take action if need be. So thank you all for coming tonight and for speaking, we really appreciate it. And don't hesitate to reach out to us in between if you have any thoughts, ideas, or questions. Thank you. So we'll move on to the review of semi-annual board policy updates from Niola in the first reading.
So in your board packets, there's all of the policies that are redlined, but there's also, it's a three-page, what I would call, overview. It probably makes, I mean, hopefully you looked at that, I think we've been talking about this. This is our, Kathy, I don't know, second or third time through a Niola policy review. They give us semi-annual reviews. And so we just met last week with our Niola representative to go through some of the changes. And I would say, as is going to be the case, the majority of board policies that come in front of you are due to legal updates when they review them. You notice that some of the non-discrimination pieces came from the Department of Education's Civil Rights. We don't really have a choice when they make some changes, that trickles down and flows obviously into some of our board policies. And so I wasn't going to go one by one through any of this in terms of each of them, because they're highlighted. Some of them are technical, some of them are minor changes. I guess, you know, the things that interest you or you want to have some further explanation beyond what's in the overview, I'm more than happy to go through, and Kathy can jump in too, as we sat and met with Richard last week to go through what each of the board policies do. For example, if you look at things like conflict of interest, you notice that in each of the categories it will get changed, whether it's board member, support staff, or personnel. So that's when you can tell there's a legal change on one end that has to impact all of those levels. So if there is an approach that you would like to go through in terms of what those are, if there were things that stood out in your mind, like explain this change a little bit more, what was the legal talk in terms of that policy? I'm more than happy to go through that with anybody.
So you'd rather have questions offline?
No, no, I think that they're important, I want them right now, if you have them, if you, yeah.
My only question is, how come we keep bouncing back before some, back and forth with some semantics on this? Like, I feel like every time it goes from the board to the Board of Education, the superintendent, back to the administrator, like, is there a way we can just stick with one of those, because I mean, that's like 90% of the changes?
Do they not get all caught?
I think the point is that they are, what they're doing is when these policies come up, because there's a legal change to them or because there's an issue with them, that's when they take the microscope to them and start changing it to the board and to the superintendent. There isn't a fix-all in Niola to do like a search for whenever district administrators mentioned. So, and some districts have district administrator versus superintendent, we have superintendent. So the goal is, is that when we review these policies, is to kind of look at them more closely and go, oh, look, that's his Board of Education. Look, that's his district administrator. So that's why you see those in the policies, because we're trying to fix them as we go along.
What I would say, Kevin, is if it's just Board of Education or superintendent, you won't get that, that's just a technical change. It's sort of as we're sweeping it for other changes, then we simultaneously make it.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I know it's like every time we come up, it's one of the little highlighted things.
It would be wonderful if there was like a search function where it would find every time it mentioned it, so we could fix it all, but there's not.
Yeah, thank you.
So what did you meet with Niola on this?
We got the policies last Wednesday, Tuesday, sorry, yeah.
So, I mean, you met with them, or they just sent you?
No, no, we, for a three-hour meeting, he comes, so we get these probably a couple months in advance, and then he schedules with each district when he can come and sit down and meet face-to-face and go through that.
So the school board used to be involved in reviewing the policies. Now we're just involved in reviewing proposed changes on the policies. When was the, we had a policy committee, and Quinn was the chair, and we used to get together as a committee and review a host of policies. Now I get 118 pages of policy in my packet, and it's, you know, and it's more like a batch approval versus going through stuff. I'd like to, I think that we should be invited to the process with Niola, because we're just more removed from it at this point than we used to be. Well, you can still recommend, that was more policies that needed to be changed, I mean, we went through a policy overhaul.
We didn't know if they needed to be changed, that's what the, that's what the, that's what the review was. We would review a batch of policies, and now somebody else reviewing the batch of policies and giving it a bunch of proposed changes. I'm just thinking that we've gotten further away from the process and given 118 pages of stuff to review and then mass approve or disapprove or whatever, which is much harder, versus being involved closer to the process like we used to be. And I'm just, my opinion, I'm just expressing, I think that went in the wrong direction.
Yeah, and that can be, that can be looked at. I mean, I don't know how many people are available during the day or if it's scheduled in terms of evening, because I know that there probably are a couple districts that may have that. My understanding is from what the board reviewed them before, they weren't precipitated by a legal update change. Where these are precipitated by legal updates, whether the board is, hey, we should revisit this policy, because they were very organic policies. So I guess what I would say is that these are all driven, and that's why we found our policies were out of tune from keeping up with the law. But you're right, it is a change, but I would say that the whole process is probably different, so.
Well, I totally get what you're saying, and I think it makes sense just to see, like, what we were talking about with the sponsorship policy. That's a whole new policy for us. Yes, this work needs to be done to keep them up to date, but I totally get what you're saying about wanting to still get in and say, is this even still relevant to us anymore, or does it kind of cover what we need to? And maybe it'd be that there's not many changes, but...
And I think, so the sponsorship is a great one, I'm glad, that is one that's come to the board over and over again, and that's going to committee and all of that, because that is not something to have. What I would say, for example, on the non-discrimination policy, that came from the Office of Civil Rights. And so that's fine if you want to have, and I would say in the past, I don't know that that was even brought up, because we didn't have that wherewithal to be able to even say that the civil rights had that piece of it. So I think there's a balance of things that you might find in here, yeah.
Say something?
I don't know, I want to cut in line with you guys. I was just going to say, from, to kind of address that you said, my understanding with it is that we did the whole policy thing, you know, those four weeks we all sat together, and that was the whole, let's revamp everything. What it seems like is we've got Niola who's going over our policies semi-annually to find inconsistencies with laws and change, and that's what we get presented. And they're kind of showing it to us, they may be breaking, I don't know how your meetings go, they're breaking it down by what it is. I mean, I agree with you, it's a lot to take in, but it's not necessarily, I would say, like when we're doing this policy change stuff with sponsorship or creating a new one or saying, we don't need to get rid of this, it's kind of just adding the legal stuff I think we were missing before, where it's like, oh, something changed. We didn't know until we knew. That's how I see it, if you will.
We didn't, we took that on ourselves to our policies. We didn't, we had to, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, we had to seek legal advice.
Yes, we did.
Now it's built into this program, now we're paying more, but this is the service that they give us. Could you have given us in smaller chunks, I guess, but we all knew that this was coming. When we signed up, they had the quarterly, is it quarterly review or semi?
Semi, unless it's a special one, like school safety will come out as a special one, because like there's an emphasis or something major changed, yeah, but otherwise it's semi-annual.
So I don't have a problem with it. We were paying for this service, and maybe the next time, there's two, I don't know. This is the first time it's coming for us since he made the switch to Niola.
It was a second, yeah.
It's a second, I think.
Did we get as many as this?
He was up there.
Probably, yeah.
So I see the value in it, I think that we have gotten more removed from the process than we need to be, is all.
Okay. And I don't disagree, so I mean, but there's some level of it, so I don't know if it's chunking them out difference if people would read them, or, I mean, I will tell you what the process, and Mike joined us because there were some financial ones that are in there and some HR ones.
You can take my spot.
Was there spreads?
Let me tell you, it's not like woo-hoo.
So these are all legal updates?
Yeah, like verbiage changes, they will say, so sometimes there's been a lawsuit across the country that said, ooh, we need to tell school districts to go back and change this, because here's a little thing, you know, and that's basically where they come to it. So he will literally walk through and redline and tell us the legal status about why we're changing it. It's not...
There's some extensive ones on school safety with the new Act 143, you know, being added, so they want to get that language in here, so that the board knows they have to bring certain school safety things to the state.
That'll be coming in another batch next month.
Wait, that's a different batch?
Yeah, the school safety, we kept as a separate batch, so that will be coming to you in April.
So to that end, if there are policies you think should be reviewed, you can reference them under, under future consideration?
Sure.
And then that would be like the old way, so to speak, where then we would have the policy meeting, policy committee meeting, and review it?
Yeah, usually administrators would bring it to us, saying, we have to look at this policy, because it's not whatever.
So instead of having these initial conversations at the committee level, we're now having it as a full board? So you take out that extra step of, you have it at a committee, and then you have it at the full board, and then you vote. So we're just bypassing the first and bringing it here for everyone to have the conversation at the same time. Understand, but at 118 pages at a time, that's a bit much. But what I'm saying is, my opinion is still that I would be happier if the board was invited to the Niola meeting if we can make it. Okay, and we'll make that note for the future, thank you. Thank you.
Hey, don't send me one, I have no desire, I don't think it's where we should be.
We'll RSVP you right away.
I don't think it's where we should be, these are all legal things. If we're looking to change a policy, yes, but...
And I think the last time we did pull out four or five of them that we felt were really were board decisions, if you remember that, they were not typical ones, and so part of it is, there was nothing here. Now, the school safety ones, there might be, but that's coming in a different batch, because we pulled those entirely out. These were what I would call all legal changes that happen at the federal level of a law.
When, sorry, you go ahead. I was about to say, and I would think it would be best practice to at least touch on your policies on a, every two or three-year cycle, you know, regardless. I know, I'm not going to know any of the legal things going into it, but at least knowing what our policies are, what's in them, so that we can make sure they're still relevant, I think still holds value. And I understand that we just kind of have this whole new set, so they shouldn't really be wildly out of date if they're only a couple years old.
And that's what the service does, is they know our policies so well that they come and say, oop, that changed, we need to go to all of our school districts that policy 3140 needs to change, because now there's this new whatever. And that's, we wouldn't have had that lens, and that's why we pay them, you know, a couple thousand dollars to do that for us. And they represented us, if anybody challenges a board policy, there is that piece of it. So we try to be cognizant of if there's something that is, or that does have local decision, because I understand that there are a couple policies that have local choice. That's why we didn't do any of the bylaws for the board and that, that wasn't part, like, we all took that on separately, because those of you have a lot more leeway on what you want for that, so.
My only thought to kind of what John was saying is, I don't remember when you said you'd met with them, but if there's any way, if we do have one of these in the future, maybe just get it a little bit earlier. Because if you do want to go through the whole thing, it is a bit of an effort, because I know with the other ones, it was like, oh, boy.
And we can do that when we schedule, he's got, we tried to do that, and I recognize that in this case, it was only a week, but there's some things in here we really need to get changed as it relates to the law, to ensure we're in compliance, so there's always this balance of timing, but I appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, on that note, I had a 10-hour flight to go over these. What he's trying to say is page one. I just, and I only have two questions.
Okay.
You should need a nap. One of them was inspection of information collection instrument. I could not tell you, oh, I'm sorry.
Policy number?
Page number, please? Let me go back to the page, it's like 122, sorry, 110 on the big packet, so probably like 108 on the other one, on the separate packet.
Do we know what the policy number is?
Okay, it looks like it's student records, and it's E330. Okay, so now...
It's a big one.
Yeah, it's a huge one, sorry. Yeah, like I said, I had 10 hours, so I wasn't sure what that exactly was.
Six pages?
The part that's in green, what part do you have questions on?
It's not even, it's like the policy of the whole, because I haven't seen them for kind of the first time.
Oh.
So it was this, it's a capital thing, inspection of information, collection instrument. So if we're collecting information from students, parents, and people have a right to look at, they check about tests, or are they talking about...
So that's a really good question. So when students either transfer into our district, let's say they move from a different district, their family moves into the district, there are certain student records that go with that, disciplinary records, achievement records, just, you may have heard the phrase cumulative files of students that we collect that. They could be an English language learner, they could have a student with an IEP, all of the things that we take from grade to grade and we move through our school. If we have a student who enters us, they come as a seventh grader, we don't know them, they haven't been here, we do a request of records, this is what this is, so every school district has what's common, and by law you have to have in the student records. We get that student records folder from a different district, and it would have all of the cumulative stuff, so we can make some assessments, see what things that child has had, experiences, programs they may have been in. They could be gifted and talented, they could have, there's a lot of different stuff. So when we talk about student records, there are some things by law that we have to have and keep in terms of being in compliance. So it's not like every, it's not like the picture they drew in kindergarten is in here or whatever the case is. There are very specific things that we are required to keep in there. Ever since the state went to having student identification numbers and all of that, that's following along a lot different, so this made this a little bit easier. But this sort of, some of the changes in here talk about if it's a charter school or private school or voucher schools, because sometimes that's been a challenge, if a student comes from one of those schools and not another public school in terms of getting the required documentation we need. If a student's been labeled English language learner or a student with a disability, and we don't have that, by law, we have to be serving them with those needs, and so this sort of addresses some of those things, it just cleaned up some of the language.
So this is basically that part... So, this is basically that part saying the parents can look and see what's in the student record?
Sure, absolutely. They can at any time, yeah.
Is there any part of the student record they can't see?
Nope.
All right, so then my other question is policy five, one, one, one. This is duh, 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 part- the part I had a question about which is talking about students who have been expelled from another school district and seem to enroll in ours. And it said that the principal or the superintendent can accept them during the term of their expulsion order. And I kinda wasn't sure how that went.
Yeah.
Like if- because if you're expelled, you're expelled. The term never really goes away, right, from another district?
Yeah, so it's from another district, not within our own district. And so, I would tell you that my personal preference is never to do that. I mean, if they're expelled, they're expelled and I would trust the judgment of another school board. And again, superintendents don't expel students. I want to be very clear. School boards expel, okay? So, if a school board- I'm just saying, if a school board- if a school board from another district expelled a student for an offense that they felt that they should not be in there, remember, an expulsion can be from anywhere from twenty-four hours all the way up to age of twenty-one. That's the range of the length of an expulsion. If a student moves into our district with an expulsion order, that's what this is addressing in terms of that saying that if the superintendent could accept it with or without the board's knowledge. I don't ever plan and I have to- can I- I'm sorry, I'm not able to scroll fast enough. Can you call up? Which part specifically, Stephen? Are you talking about the policy in general or a change to it?
P. It's P., P. blonde, basically.
So, it's talking about- the wording out of it kinda just threw me off. So, it sounds like if the student is still under the expulsion order, it has to be approved by the board. If it's a past expulsion, the student is no longer under it, then they can be accepted under, it sounds like, the power of the superintendent of the new district.
Yeah, and I would just tell- and that's true. I mean, that's how the policy is. The new part has to do with an out-of-state student because we know that out-of-state- so, the green stuff that you see under P. three there is the new stuff because it didn't really clarify what it meant from an out-of-state student because we only know what Wisconsin laws are in terms of expulsion of students. Different states have different rules. And so, that gets a little bit trickier, which, again, we would wanna- and that goes back to your- there is a link to your student records policy about which we are by law, whether it's open enrollment or whatever the cases. They are required to share with us any disciplinary proceedings that we're leading up to expulsion of a student. They can't hide that in terms of even an open enrollment because that can be used for a reason to not accept them into open enrollment.
Okay.
Nobody else has-
Anybody else? Okay.
Stephen also wrote it in German.
Yes.
On to six. Okay, so again, these will come forward again next week for a vote.
And then, in, I would say, in April, you will get the security policy ones. And so, we have those already. We'll get them to you very early then, right now, so you have a chance to look at those earlier. And they're a much smaller chunk, too.
Okay, thank you. On to six discussion and reports. A is 2019, 2020 budget assumptions.
Yeah, simply because I don't want to go a board meeting without talking. I did want to get in front of you just some of the budget assumptions that we're making right now in the budget as a reminder of the timeline up there. Typically, somewhere around now or April, I'll give you just a little overview. This is a very quick snapshot and we can go a little more in-depth next month if you so desire. But then in June, you get the preliminary budget. Hopefully, a biennial budget is in the making. Quinn says no. Is in the makings by then, but we would have to pass some sort of spending expenditure budget before July one. And then, we revisit in August and then we finalize in October and we're already halfway through the year. So, just a reminder of that timeline, but just to touch upon the revenue assumptions, we're carrying forward the same FTE for student membership. We've had really strong growth, if you recall, for our resident membership, though specific the last two years. And so, that's kind of reversed from where we've been. So, that's been positive to see. It's decreased the open enrollment during that time, but I'm carrying forward FTEs. Within the revenue limit itself, as kind of been now the practice for four years, zero dollars into the revenue limit itself. The per pupil categorical change is- is still up in the air as well. If you saw Tony Evers' proposed budget of like ten gajillion dollars, we have in there two hundred and two, two oh four, I believe, for per member for increased revenue for school districts. We don't know if that means in current state law, we're actually going backwards twenty-four dollars. That's what's current law for next year for nineteen twenty. It was six hundred and fifty-four dollars per pupil. Current law says you go back to six thirty. So, right now, there's actually a loss in dollars. So, when he proposes two hundred dollars per pupil, we're not sure if that means two hundred new dollars or is it two hundred from six thirty that's in law. And so, that's why in here I've gone, I would say, the conservative route. I think other districts are going more conservative, but at a hundred and seventy-six dollar increase to account for the twenty-four dollars that we'd be going backwards. Again, important to note, even with that proposal, it's about a one-point-five percent increase in revenue, which has kind of just been the norm of what we've seen the last four- well, the last two years. So, this would be continuing that one-point-five percent increase. The other important piece on the revenue side is that special ed reimbursement. I think you've heard quite a bit about that. Right now, current allocations are reimbursement of special ed expenditures that are eligible of twenty-five, twenty-six percent, somewhere around that range. So, in other words, districts are covering about seventy-five percent of special ed expenditures. The budget proposed is to make that sixty. I would think thirty would be a really nice step. And so, I'm not moving that in, though. I'm keeping it at the current law or the current rate of twenty-five percent and we'll kind of see what happens. A thirty percent increase would probably bring the district about a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of additional revenue on that side of things if we would go on that route. So, that would be great. And I'm keeping open enrollment flat. As far as expenditures go, just a couple of notes. Wages, we want to hold an HR committee here in the next little bit to talk about what wages mean and what that revenue increase means and how to, you know, have a sustainable model across all employee groups. We are looking at some intense educator summer professional development. An important variable here is I have traditionally in the last couple of years been putting health insurance benefits at full utilization. I think you're gonna see this year that that has been- we're coming under budget in health insurance this year. And so, maybe that hundred percent utilization isn't necessary. We might pull that back a little bit. And then, the other big one I just want to bring up is the property insurance piece. We've had some really poor claims the last two years as far as workers' comp goes. And so, we're seeing a significant increase in our property insurance in the tune of probably conservatively eighty thousand dollars increase to there. So, that's been a bummer, but there's also some decreases here as well. So, right now, we're looking at a budget of around twenty-eight and a half million dollars and a balanced budget at that. So, can bring forward any details, you know, either next month or just wait till June, kind of feel that out as far as what you want to see as far as the detail goes.
Have- has DPI sent you that worksheet?
The worksheet's always out there and they just say districts updated. You're talking about the revenue limit worksheet? Yeah, that's always out there. But, it's just a lot of variables right now that we just guess on. I mean, strongly prepared with great accuracy.
Okay, anything else? Seven items for future consideration. Anyone have any? All right, on to eight announcements.
Well, I was out to play this weekend and the kids and Mr. Weiss-Gurber and everybody involved did a really nice job.
Anybody else?
Saturday is the Whitnell Park Rotary Club's Spring Craft Fair, which goes to the scholarships for our students. So, if you have nothing else to do on Saturday, it's being held here at Whitnell High School, so.
It's a big one.
I hope you won't be surprised.
We have a waiting list again, so nothing else, absolutely.
If you have anything to do still.
And I hear the Easter Bunny is hopping around even though it's really St. Patrick's Day, so we're close to it. So, you can figure out your holidays if you want a picture with the Easter Bunny.
Any other announcements?
Our Boy Scouts will be working that craft fair once again.
So, I want to thank Dr. Olson and the rest of the staff, both at the elementary schools, middle school and high school, for everything they did to put together the wake and funeral that was here. Was it last weekend or two weekends ago? Last weekend. You know, it was- it was a trying time and not try. I mean, trying to talk your kids through it while you're grieving too and trying to balance that. I don't think anything can kind of prepare you for that, especially when it really hits home. And, you know, to see our- the staff, you know, people come in on a Saturday, give up their time to be here. Seeing our students, you know, high school boys who- the stereotype is, "Oh, they're macho. They don't show their emotions. They don't do anything," right? But, these boys who care deeply about their friend and to see them all being raw and emotional and while doing it, supporting each other through it. You know, it's one regard hard to see your kids, you're always around crying and just being devastated. But, the family really appreciated and the kids appreciated having the space and being in a place where they're comfortable, not at a funeral home or anyplace else, being here. And they weren't on top of each other. They had space to move. And it was just an amazing thing to see the Whitnell community once again rally around and support each other and be there for each other. So, that kind of stuff typically flies under the radar. We don't see it much. It's always happening. So, I just want to thank Dr. Olson, principals, the custodians. Chad was here on his day off just to pay his respects and support the kids, right, because they see him in the buildings and they're around him and he was there for that. And the kitchen staff for putting together cookies and drinks and everything. It was heartbreaking but heartwarming experience to see the Whitnell community again rally together, so thank you. I made it without crying, so that's a win. On to nine, Board of Education meeting debrief. Anyone?
I think we did a good- a pretty good job of number eight. Everyone will have a chance to speak before the member can speak again. We always gotta work on that, but I think we did a- we did a pretty good job.
I think that I've said before, I think our rules are a bit restrictive on the official channels people have to go through to get to speak. I still think we need to revisit those and be more accessible. But, given the rules that were today, you did a difficult but necessary job, given the rules that we have today, though I disagree with them, like I said, of- it's a difficult thing to shut- to tell somebody they have to stop speaking, you know? But, you had to be fair to everybody and I think that wasn't easy to do, but like I said, I understand time limits too, you know? But, I think that maybe we would have had more folks express opinions if it was a more easy process and more flexible process or at least, like I say, less of a process to go through to get to speak.
And I think to that end, most of the people that spoke tonight, at least half, maybe two, two email us ahead of time, right? So, community members can always reach us, email, whatever it is, and we responded to all of them, right? So, they don't just have to come through the board meeting to do that. There are other channels. Our email is out on the district website. You can reach us that way. We can respond to community members. So, I don't want people- you're right. I don't want people to think that the only way they can contact us is having to show up here and be on video, right? You can email us, reach out that way and we'll respond. Everything happens conversations too, so.
Yeah, I would say to that, too, I met with a couple of people who reached out and wanted to talk and I try to shift my schedule. If someone says, "Hey, I, you know, here's this big email, but I want to talk to you further about this and try to understand where you're coming from." I'm all ears, so. And I did read every email, so.
I don't get what you said. It's pretty easy just to sign up and talk, so I don't know.
Well, I mean, I don't want to- I can rehash it if you like.
Well, you- no, you made a comment that it's not very easy to talk to us. All you gotta do is sign a piece of paper and you get your opportunity to speak.
Okay, so, just, I guess I will rehash it then. So, a while back, the board decided through a vote that we were going to go through this. You must sign up in- before the meeting if you intend to speak or you might want to speak. The way it used to be was if you felt like speaking, then- and when it was the appropriate time, then you could just step up to the microphone, give your name and address and all that kind of stuff and then say what you had to say. There was still a time limit, okay? They didn't have- so, now you have to, just on spec, sign up in advance or you can't speak. But, what if some conversation goes on among us that then inspires somebody, "Well, I wasn't planning on speaking today," but, you know, and then they find out, "Oh, you mean I had to sign up?" And that happened just a couple of meetings ago. So, I disagree with the process. I think it is too restrictive and unnecessary. I think that we shouldn't have to have a signup sheet and that if people feel like saying something, that they should be able to say something. Doing the name and address thing, but they should be able to say something when it's the appropriate time.
Sure, what has worked? I had that experience today. I didn't know I was gonna want to say something and then I did.
I'll also state, too, that we also have a second meeting. It's next week. Anybody can register to speak at that one beforehand. Just refer to reference, which is why we have two meetings, so that if you didn't get a chance to speak at the first one or you want to review stuff, we do have that second meeting, that second opportunity. We also have our emails if you want to talk to us as well, so.
And at that meeting, they can only speak at the beginning of the meeting, right?
Fact.
Correct.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, look for an email about a potential finance facility and personnel meeting in the next couple of weeks. We're just gonna try to gauge people's availability for dates, so just watch your email for that. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, everybody wants to go. Jeez. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a great night.